Certainly Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Here.
Evening.
Commissioner Engel?
Here.
Commissioner Zubor is here and Chairman Green.
I am here and of course we have our community planner Jeff Glay. We welcome all of you who are here tonight as well and those who will ultimately be watching the tape at home. Tonight we have four agenda items. One is a public hearing and three are site plans. But before we get to that, we did have a meeting on October 8th. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of October 8th meeting?
So moved.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Perkins, the birthday girl, to accept those things. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Again, we have agenda items one through four. We're going to do the first one is a public hearing. Public hearings are kind of special because we do invite the audience to participate if they so choose. If they don't want to, that's fine as well. But we do open it for the public and hope that you will participate. Our first agenda item tonight is the all rig development, which is we're considering a special land use approval for property which is located north of Ford Road between Sheldon and Canton Center Road. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, this is a request for special land use for a fast food restaurant. The site is .58 acres. This is an existing out parcel that comprises the Elite Eye Care on the north side of Ford Road, kind of in between Comerica Bank and Huntington Bank there in the Newtown Shopping Plaza area. The site received a variance to the minimum lot width required for fast food because it didn't have the width along Ford Road, but it does have the width on the internal access road to the shopping center where its driveways are located. So due to its unique configuration, the zoning board of appeals granted relief to the minimum lot width for fast food. So this, right now this, right now this fast food restaurant is an unspecified fast food restaurant. They're not naming the restaurant at this point, so Mr. Amen may have some more information for you. Site's a little bit tight. They are replacing a, the drive-through lane on the west side of the property as shown on the plan here, but generally there's good circulation in and out with the existing driveways. Onto the driveway, they do meet all of the general requirements for special land use for the use. As you can see, there's a one-way drive around the west side, looping around back to the front and exiting back out onto the internal drive access to the shopping center, similar to the McDonald's drive-through, except this has two entrances instead of one on the, on the east side and no entrance onto Ford Road. So all of the traffic should be maintained on the internal drive system. So the responses to the special land use, Angela has provided responses to all of the questions and the staff write-up and, and Mr. Amen's letter to you. He addresses all of the special land use criteria for the use. I won't go through those in detail and I'll invite Brian up to the podium to explain the project.
All right, thanks to Jeff. And while he is doing that, do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Support?
All right, we've got a motion to open the public, ooh, I didn't have the mic on.
Whoa.
Wonder why I couldn't hear you.
Motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian Amen, on behalf of the applicant all rig development. We are excited to be a part of this and I, for a few reasons. First, this is going to be, I think, one of the last older buildings along the section of Ford Road to finally be redeveloped. And the, I can now divulge the name of the prospective user is Smoothie King, which is a national brand of a healthy, a healthy smoothie that it's, you know, cleansing, all kinds of great things that I would normally never imbibe in, but you know, on the rare occasion, I'll probably stop in thinking, better to do that than go two doors over to McDonald's. But, so we are very thankful. The staff has worked well with this. The administration's worked hard with this to try to figure out how to make sure this use actually fits this site appropriately because this, the use could be bigger or smaller, so they've right-sized it to this parcel. Predominant usage will be, you know, we, we talked about the hours of usage, I think we've indicated, I think there's 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. and between 200 to 300 customers a day are anticipated. So it generally balances out. It's amazing how people don't necessarily flock to a healthy solution like they do McDonald's. So we think the balance of the traffic will be appropriate and the site will handle appropriately, particularly with the off-site, the driveway that we have off of Ford Road with no direct access on the Ford Road. We are fortunate that we don't create any traffic issues. We are able to fit everything else on the site in terms of everything else we need. So with that, we would be prepared to answer any questions. I only have to note that if, so is today Commissioner Perkins' birthday?
No, it was yesterday.
Oh, okay, so mine was, my birthday's today. I didn't want to have to, you recuse on a conflict on that basis, and so I wanted to just make sure of that. So, okay, good.
Are you 29 as well?
Yeah, 32 times, yeah. So, yeah, yeah, so.
Same, I feel like we're just 29.
No, no.
Unfortunately, we've already approved the agenda for today.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you.
It didn't require a choir.
With that, I'm certainly glad that, anybody else from the public who wants to comment, glad to answer any questions that come up from either.
Awesome, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that said, I'm going to go to the audience and ask if there's any comments, questions, concerns, anything whatsoever. Now's your opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing. Support?
Okay, we've got a motion to close the public hearing at about 7 after 7 from Commissioner Zubor and support from Commissioner, is it Eggenberger or Perkins? You just, you said, again, birthday girl? All right, you're really busy today. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to start down at this end with Commissioner Graham Hudak and ask if you have anything to comment on.
Yes, thank you. So healthy food sounds good. Did you do a market study? Was the market study done?
Smoothie King is actually coming into this region, this, they were expecting this to be the first store they open up as basis of the market study, based on what they view as Canton being an ideal market. They are also seeking a location in Livonia at this time as well, in front of an L.A. fitness center in that direction. And so, yeah, so they've done market studies as it relates to their expected success at this site, so, yeah.
Where's New York's?
New York.
Oh, okay, so they're.
Yeah, they're, they're global. They're in South Korea, they're in all kinds of parts of the world, in New York, and now Canton, Michigan will be their first entree into the Midwest, so.
Wow. They based out of California?
Well, there's a California base, but their predominance is a New York location, based on densities, yeah.
Turning to the layout, and Jeff, you might help with this. I mean, I noticed that once the cars get in that line, they're kind of trapped. I know McDonald's, you kind of have an extra lane if you change your mind for a little bit, and Burger King's kind of similar, you get kind of trapped once you get past the, do we have any data on that at all, if that makes customers upset or?
We can tell you, I mean, we looked at the site as it relates to the concerns. We are expecting, based on the data we gave to the planning staff, something in the range of 10 to 15 customers per hour on an average basis. Now, we'll probably have a few more in the morning, a few more in certain times of the day or whatever, but we're required to show you the stacking for 10 vehicles in the depiction that we give you. If the day arrives that we actually have 10 vehicles in this lane, I think this, this restaurant would decide to find a much bigger location and double their size or something. But, but we don't, but, but we have found that essentially, based on the nature of our customer, it's not a particular issue for our customer. It's not the kind of a fast food, it's, because people come in and although we have set menu items, people come in and kind of custom order their items with a touch of this, a touch of that or whatever, so they anticipate spending a little more time. So we have, we are, we are, at least, we have no concerns really about not having the pass-around lane that you would normally have, and so, yeah, so the user is comfortable with that.
You don't think a bailout thing is necessary in case they change their mind?
They'd have to bail out to the bank drive-through.
Yeah, yeah, the bank has actually a triple drive-through, but short of them cutting over our landscaping, which we wouldn't prefer they do. But we really don't, we, we think, you know, the ordering position is far enough back essentially that they, they're going to get to make a decision there or get out if they want, so we're pretty comfortable with that. If, obviously, if we open up and something happens that we find that we're surprised by that, we're going to have to adjust, but we, we've looked at that, the engineering's looked at it, the company's looked at it, and they're comfortable with that.
Commissioner Graham Hudak, was that your concern about whether or not you'd be able to, okay.
Yeah, yeah. How long do people usually, does an order take? I'm just trying to, I mean, McDonald's decks are pretty good there.
Yeah, McDonald's decks, smoothies, you know, these are, they, they only offer packaged food goods, so it's not like they're making food or anything like that. So generally, a smoothie is a two-minute kind of a thing. I mean, it's, you know, and predetermined, it's kind of, it's, it's more akin to a Starbucks drive-through without being able to order all the food and stuff like that, so it's pretty quick, quick, quick like that, so, yeah.
All right, and what, do you know what the average price is? I'm just wondering.
Uh, no, but I'm sure I'm going to find out once they open, because my wife will insist I go there instead of McDonald's.
I think they have a lot of information on their website.
They do.
You can go onto Smoothie King's website.
Very transparent website, yeah.
Thanks.
Commissioner Engel?
I'm all set.
Commissioner Zubor?
Um, I'm not, I'm not like thrilled with the way the exterior looks, but.
Can review that when the site plan.
Yeah, you'll see that next month, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. Hope it can look better.
We haven't gotten the final site plan submission yet.
Got it.
To get through, get through this first, right? Is that your only concern?
That's my only concern.
Okay. My concern was, is just a minor one, but I'm looking at your, your flow plan and I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more expedient to have an, an in driveway and an out driveway, in at the, at the north side and out at the south side, because I, I see some potential conflicting going on there. But again, it's going to depend on the volume that takes place.
Well, and so we are subject to existing reciprocal restrictions and easements which provide that is that both of those entrances is in and out, but part of that is based on there's an anticipation that some traffic will actually come from the center to want to turn into the rear one and then whatever, so it's hard to anticipate that. But that's, the reciprocal easement agreements that are in place for the center, for the Newtown Center, kind of dictate what goes on, because they wanted freedom of flow of customers either from the center or from Ford Road.
Yeah, I just thought that perhaps for their business, it would be easier for people to just go in on the north side, since that's where the entrance to the lane is, and then exit at the, to the south side.
Well, sometimes if they're really busy, Greg, coming out the south entrance is not the best thing if there's people stacked up to get out to Ford Road, and this gives the people an option to go to their northerly entrance to get out if they need to get out due to, you know, for example, if they're, you know, during Kohl's busy season when people are getting out on Ford Road through that driveway and they're stacked up to get out onto Ford Road because they can't turn yet, that gives people the ability to go to the north driveway to get into the stacking lane to get out of the shopping center, or to get out and use the marginal access through the shopping center to get out to Sheldon or Ford in another direction.
Okay, that was my concern. I do share Commissioner Zubor's concern, but again, we're not at that stage in terms of how, how it appears to, to, to everyone.
Brian, would you like some feedback before you guys finish up the site plan?
Certainly, I'll certainly take those comments back. Are there particular features of the elevation that are of concern to the Commissioner Zubor?
Could use a little pop.
Yeah, it's kind of plain.
I mean, it's just kind of like.
Plain? Okay, I was afraid you thought it was a little extreme in terms of the bright colors.
A little extreme, no, I like the red.
And actually, you're kind of looking at a black and white version of that, so when we get you the colored version, a little more color will.
Maybe have some material samples.
Oh, yeah, you can count on that.
Signage will help too, I'm sure.
Actually, the architects offered material samples tonight and I said, no, not going there, don't come, don't bring them, so it's my fault. But, yeah, but we'll certainly, we'll be prepared for that. And, yeah, clearly it'll be a lot better than what's there today, but we'll certainly want to make sure we're, you know, keeping up the bar, raising the bars along, along Ford Road there. So, it's not lost on us, we're next to a triple drive-through at Comerica, so it kind of goes from the bank, triple drive-through to, they're going to want to see something, so, yeah.
Thank you for remembering the Vic Gustafson phrase.
Raise the bar. If you don't get it in once a month, I think he, he does some kind of convulsion or something, so, yeah.
Essentially, they've got stone base with a brick body of, of the building with a little bit of ephesus on the top and looks like some metal or fabric on it, and so it's, at this point, pretty generic, so.
Yeah, this is a, this is, it's, I'm, I'm hoping and I'm thinking it's probably more of an issue of the depiction, what you're seeing versus what the reality would be, but next time we're back on the site plan, you'll see a much greater depiction of that and the colors and the materials.
Well, have they, because they're, they're an overseas outfit, have they developed any kind of corporate theme or?
They do have a brand look. They're, they're mainly domestic, but they have a few locations overseas, global, South Korea and other locations, and those, you would not want to think about what they look like, yeah, so they're different.
All right, I look forward to that, if we get through this. Okay, Commissioner Perkins?
I'm all set.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
I am also all set, but I appreciate you telling us what it is, it was driving me crazy. Not knowing, what is this?
It was, and, and when Mr. Glay said, when I submitted everything, it was, I was not in the position, but since then that changed and I was looking at it, I'm like, oh no, we can tell, but that's great, I'm glad I can actually do a bit of a reveal, so that's great.
Actually, I thought it was going to be a fast food seafood restaurant, but that's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still going to get you a seafood restaurant before I'm done, I promise you that, so, yeah. It's, it's been the chairman's one request, so, yeah.
Commissioner Bennett?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Good, all right. Any further discussion, comments, motions?
Where'd the trash area go then? Under the yellow awning then?
It's, no, the trash area is back in the far section.
Right at the, right at the start of the line, see the last car?
The gray boxes.
Gray box.
Yeah, probably have an area that a truck could actually come around, make the appropriate maneuver and get out, so, yeah.
That's where the menu would be then also, or the?
The menu will be just a little around on the left, right there.
There's a little black dot there on the, yeah.
Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the special land use request for a fast food restaurant with drive-through window to be located on parcel 03999-0027010, based upon the findings that all necessary public utilities are available to the site. Detrimental effects will be mitigated by conformance to ordinance standards for light landscaping, et cetera. The proposed use is consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. Traffic generated above that by the current use will be mitigated by distribution of vehicle trips to exit on Sheldon Road, Ford Road and Canton Center Road. Additional access to Ford Road is not proposed.
Support?
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zubor. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes, so it's unanimous.
Thank you, we'll see you again.
Okay, all right, very good.
For your birthday.
Yes, happy birthday. All right, our second agenda item of the night is the University of Michigan parking lot modification. We are considering a site plan approval for this property which is located west of Canton Center and south of Salts. Can you give us more, Jeff?
Yes, this is the area to the west of the existing funeral home on Canton Center Road, it kind of connects to the back end of the U of M medical facility. Originally, when the funeral home was built, they had an expansion area for a parking lot. Since that time, they've sold the back portion off to U of M, and U of M's doing a parking lot expansion. I think in reality, both facilities are going to be using this expansion because it's, at certain times, there is a need for overflow parking from the funeral home when there's large or multiple funerals going on at one time or visitations and so forth. So the only thing that they need, because it exceeds the maximum allowed for the use, they need a modification to exceed the number of parking spaces they would typically be permitted. Given the fact that U of M is a large, busy facility with a lot of employees and a lot of people coming and going and waiting for appointments, in addition to it being interconnected with the funeral home location, we would feel there's justification to allow the modification to the parking lot. So the, your action tonight is really to approve the modification, if you want to go ahead and include approval of the site plan in there. This doesn't have to go to the township board, it would normally be an administrative approval. I'm not sure exactly how Lee has worded the motion, but other than that, we don't see any problems with it. There's plenty of landscape buffer adjacent to the neighborhood, you know, the light levels are matching the light standards in the design of the existing parking lot and so forth, so it should be pretty seamless.
All right, we're going to go right to the commission. Commissioner Bennett?
So my only question would be about the landscape buffers to the neighbors, but you said there's?
Yeah, you can see there's, there's at least 30 feet there between the property line. There's already a wall there, so this is landscaping in between the wall and the, you know, parking lot edge, so we had to move it over a little bit to meet the 30-foot minimum requirement, which was an increase from the time they originally came in, the, our standards changed to require a larger buffer, so they accommodated that with a change.
Great, thank you. That's all.
Eggenberger?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Perkins?
Um, I, I think it's good. I also would recommend that we approve the site plan too, as Jeff indicated.
Commissioner Zubor?
Excuse me, my only question, Jeff already answered, about whether the funeral home could use this parking lot too, so.
They're already using U of M's parking lot, so.
Okay, they're sharing, good.
Commissioner Engel?
I'm all set.
Graham Hudak?
Yes, since we're moving, I mean, you're actually going to do more lighting there, so is that going to make, are we going to make sure it doesn't go into those homes?
Yeah, it's low-level lighting and they have to have shields on them so the light doesn't go off the property line, so they, they're meeting the, the .1-foot candle requirements at the property line.
Drainage change?
It goes into the existing pond as part of their engineering approval, the drainage will go into the existing detention pond that they share with the funeral home.
And they're going to work it out between them, how they share it, correct?
There's already a sharing agreement there, so if they need to make any modifications, that'll be up to Wayne County on whether or not Wayne County wants it retrofitted for any reason. It's an older pond, but it does have a forbey in it, so we're not sure what Wayne County may or may not require, so, but the volume is already there.
All set? Okay, the only, the only concern I had was just, wow, that's a long way to walk if you're a patient to go to, to the building, but they said that they're going to make, make their employees.
Primary employee parking, right.
Then frees up some spots for the patients, so I think that's a good idea, quite honestly. So do I hear a motion?
Sure.
And, and let me stop you for just one second. So are we just approving the modification to the parking requirement, or are we approving the site plan as well?
You can do either one or both, so right now the motion is, the motion is to approve the modification.
I was going to surprise you with my motion.
Oh.
So, you could, you could include approval of the site plan at the same time if you'd like, so.
I think we should. Okay, I'm sorry. Proceed.
Drum roll, please.
Please proceed.
I move to recommend approval of the proposed parking modification and site plan for the University of Michigan Canton Health Center on parcel number 71-064-990007-713.
Support?
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Bennett. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Okay, that is unanimous, and our next project is Clients First. We are considering a developer instigated revision to an approved site plan on property which is located south of Ford Road between Sheldon and Morton Taylor. Jeff, could you give us more?
Uh, yes, Clients First is basically the little real estate office we have on Ford Road adjacent to the existing real estate office. I think originally this was a small church at one time, but it's been a, kind of a small real estate office for many years. Mr. Karapisakis, who owns the property next door, has purchased this property and he kind of wants to reface it and kind of make it appear that it's similar or almost, you know, to kind of reflect what the existing architecture of the building adjacent to it is, he retrofitted that building a couple of years ago. So they, essentially, since that building really isn't brick now, they're proposing to use a material that matches the material on the building to the west, as you can see on the, the, the plans. So I'll let the project sponsor get up and explain to you what they're trying to accomplish. So what they're asking for is a modification to the brick requirement, so.
Thank you, Jeff. And project sponsor, would you care to enlighten us more?
Bill can explain it better than I can, so.
Good evening, my name is Bimustakas, I'm the project architect for the proposed renovation, and I think Jeff summarized it quite well. What we're looking to do is basically emulate, to the best of our ability, to match the building that is also owned by Mr. Karapisakis, with me here this evening, to the west of the building that we're looking to renovate. The materials that we're proposing to use, the split-faced block, in the existing building, it's an actual foundation split-faced block. Here, we're proposing to use a different product, you shouldn't say different, it's a masonry product, and I can pass this around if you'd like to take a closer look at it.
Ready to catch that.
But it's going to be an eight-by-eight, just like the building next door. The only difference is there's no foundation required, and it's applied directly to a substrate, a cementous substrate that would be over new insulation and anchored to the existing wood structure. So that's the main difference between the two materials structurally. Aesthetically, they're identical, and the texture is identical, the color will be identical, and so that's really the, what I wanted to make sure we understood, that, you know, aesthetically it's going to be the same, but the application is just a little bit different. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
All right, Commissioner Graham Hudak, let me start with you.
Questions, thank you.
Commissioner Engel?
Good, no questions.
Commissioner Zubor?
I think it's a vast improvement over that little building that's there now. I wish that we could hide a little more of the roof, the existing roof though, but I do like it.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I have two, two issues, and Jeff, maybe you could answer this one. Whenever there's a more major exterior renovation, isn't there a requirement to at least put in some of the DDA elements, let's say like the corner wall piece or anything like that?
I mean, basically, this is an exterior modification, they're not doing any additions or changes to the site, they are upgrading some of the landscaping. This is a very narrow site, it's only about 50 feet on Ford Road on a corner, so there's really not, you know, room to put, I mean, there's nothing, there's no parking lot in between the building and the sidewalk, so they, just like the building next door, they're kind of adding some frontage landscaping or filling in landscaping where it doesn't exist as, as we requested them to do, but at this point, with not even knowing what's going to happen with Ford Road with the Boulevard project, I wouldn't recommend adding any more walls at this point, because they just may have to get moved.
That's a, that's a good point, but I was, I was thinking about the, the progression of the wall. I think there is probably not much of the elements there other than the lights until you get to the corner, and that's because there hasn't been any major reconstruction.
And I think at the point in time after the Boulevard's reconstructed, we can see where the lights and things have to be moved, because a lot of the lights along Ford Road are going to have to be moved, moved back to, so then I think the DDA can assess where those, those improvements need to be, but at this point, we wouldn't recommend adding any more hardscape to the south side of Ford Road, because that's the constrained side of the road to begin with.
The other concern I have is the west elevation and south elevation, it kind of goes along with, I think, where Commissioner Zuber was going, and this, the additional facade is great, don't get me wrong, I really enjoy the improvement here, but I feel like even though it's sandwiched in between the two buildings, there should have been some treatment on the west elevation more than what we see, and on the south elevation as well. I don't, I don't know what you could do there in terms of design, but...
Well, the south elevation faces residential, so this is the residential side of the building, so you really don't want it to make it look commercial because of the transition.
Okay, that part I could agree with.
Okay, the west side of the building, the buildings are only 10 feet apart, Greg, you'll never see it.
And if that, if the building to the west gets torn down, then we do see it.
Well, if the building to the west gets torn down, they'll tear down both buildings and redevelop the site.
Maybe, maybe.
And I think Chris talked to me about connecting the two buildings and making them one at one point in time.
I understand, I understand, but you know where I'm going with this. A lot of times, we think that something is never going to be seen, and 10 years later, it is seen. There's pretty much not anything in Canton that's not visible, and we want the best product out there. And so that was my only concern, I don't know if that's shared by members of the board, but...
I mean, would it look any better to take the siding off and put the cementous material along the west side? I don't think it would look any better than leaving the siding there it is. So the point is to make the fronts look the same, because you basically have a concrete block wall on Chris's building to the west. So you have two concrete block walls then facing one another, what are we accomplishing?
That's pretty much the sentiment?
I mean, that's why we didn't have him address it, because it's, either you have siding to a concrete block wall, or you have concrete... What's the sense in putting, taking the siding off and putting the substrate on and adding a thin block material facing a block material that already exists, so, that are 10 feet apart.
I have less of an issue with that than I do with the back, honestly.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I should have said that.
Even though that's looked at by residential, you still...
Yeah, because it just, it looks kind of jumbled, the way it's drawn, and I kind of wish, I mean...
Is that an existing porch on the back already?
Residential, but, no, it says new.
It says new, that porch.
It's residential, but that isn't really a residential facade that's left there, but...
Well, seven-eighths of it is.
What's that?
Seven-eighths of it is.
Seven-eighths of it is, okay.
I mean, on that south side, Bill, what can you do to keep the nature of that similar to what it was?
Yeah, I think, you know, we have to address the porch that's existing there now, it's inadequate.
Do you need a porch there?
There's an existing smaller porch, a wooden...
What's its function?
There's a door, there's an exit there.
Exit.
From the building. We're talking about the south elevation now?
Right. I mean, is there any way you could do something differently that makes that not look like it's half and half?
A porch roof wraparound more...
I guess, you know, again, the theory that we have is that we wanted to continue a little bit of that new facade coming around the south, but not overtake the residential look. So we stopped it at the porch where our construction line, if you will, ends. We didn't want to extend it any further, but, you know, we're open, you know, the suggestions, if you think that...
We don't have a picture of the back of what that looks like right now.
Not a photo, there's just the elevation.
Right now, is it just like a stoop on the back?
I'm sorry?
Is it just like a stoop on the back?
It's just a porch with no cover, just an open...
So it's just a stoop?
Yeah.
I'd rather see that band come across somehow and tie, make, I mean...
You're talking about the awning?
Yeah, the awning at the, above the porch.
Not really even an awning, but it's...
Bulkhead or something.
He's placed a cover, if you look, yeah, he's basically extending a roof line out over the porch that exists there now. Right now, there's nothing that extends out, so is there anything you could take off from the existing facade so you're not bringing the structure further south?
Well, we could, obviously, we can stop that new facade at the corner, the existing corner of the building, and not extend it over the porch. We just felt that it might be more appropriate to have a cover over that back porch, because some people may want to use that as an entry as well.
Yeah, no, I think that's...
And I think in order to extend it, then you're going to be in conflict aesthetically with that gable look of the existing building, so at that point, you almost have to change the entire elevation, I think, rather than just having that band go across to the west.
Don't you just want them to tie those roof lines in a little bit better, so they're not one, yeah, because you've got one where the kind of parapet or the vertical portion of that facade actually is higher than where it meets the peak line or the angle part of the roof. The two fascias don't meet, right? The fascia along the roof line that comes down like this isn't even meeting the horizontal, you know, trim strip that goes along the vertical portion of the new portion of the roof cover.
Yeah, I guess what...
I think it looks too heavy to me, but I don't know how you bring it around one side and wrap it around and tie it in together, I don't...
Right, but the bottom line, I think we just wanted to have a transition somewhere where we have to end it, and I think that it makes sense to end it at the end of the new porch area, rather than taking it any further, which then it wouldn't really match anything else on that elevation.
Yeah, I guess what bothers me is that you can see so much of the, you know, we're hiding it from the front, but you can still see that, the roof, the gable roof in the back facade so clearly from behind, but that's just...
It looks kind of like a shell that you just plop down over a building, and it just, it doesn't feel right.
It is.
They're trying to keep that park, because it's seen by just the residents on that street, which is...
But if I lived on that street, I wouldn't appreciate that, but...
You know, basically, there's a parking lot that they built across the street, it basically faces a parking lot on the other side that was expanded for the business on the other corner, but...
Oh, okay, well...
Parking lot and detention pond on the other side, so... So the only people that's really inclined is the house that is to the south of this is looking directly at the back of this, so I don't know what kind of... Chris, what kind of vegetation is back there, do you know?
I think it's just open grass area, there's a couple of larger trees.
At one point, I'm just going to go at the back of the parking lot, and that's enough.
Okay.
Alone, or...
Yeah.
Basically, all right.
My piece.
We're going to leave it alone.
But we didn't go to the rest of the board.
I'm good with leaving it alone.
Okay.
Good with leaving it alone.
Did we talk too long? Again.
Okay. Anyone have any further comments, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the building material modifications as requested, as presented on the architectural elevation sheet labeled as A-2.0, revision date 10/29/18.
Support. They jumped in for a birthday, they're all...
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none, Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, and thank you for your patience in indulging us.
And Bill, as you put construction plans together, if you can work a little bit on the transition between those two, see if you can tighten that up a little bit, so it's not quite so awkward, that'd be great.
We'll keep a sample, or we don't need it.
You need that as a paper weight?
I was hoping you don't notice.
Thank you for bringing that in, appreciate it. Our fourth agenda item of the night is Pizza Hut facade renovation. We're considering a site plan approval for property which is located south of Ford Road between Sheldon and Canton Center by the Meyer Enchance. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, the existing Pizza Hut that's been on Ford Road forever is not going to be a Pizza Hut for much longer. The Pizza Hut carryout is moving to the Sheldon and Ford location where 7-Eleven is, so the new owner of the property is looking at taking this building, using the existing footprint of the building, and refacing the building to give it a more modern appearance. As part of that, they're going to be doing some landscaping along the property lines, they are adding DDA improvements in this particular area as requested due to the major change to the building, since they're changing the building from a sit-down restaurant to basically to carryout restaurants, we felt they needed to do the site upgrades to the site. But they needed some minor modifications to some of the foundation landscaping requirements because the sidewalk already abuts the existing building, so we're recommending we approve the landscape modifications to the site. But due to the nature of the change, normally, I would have administratively approved this, except for the landscape modification, but due to the major change in the building location, I thought you guys needed to see this, so... So this is what it will look like when it's redone, so, which is a major change from what you see there. But basically, it's using the same footprint, and Mike Bojo, the architect, is here to describe what they're proposing to do with the building. So this is a little bit cleaner than the last one?
Little bit, just a little bit.
Yeah.
Hello? My name is Mike Bojo, I'm the architect. It'll be four and a half, same rendering, just a different color, it's colored a little better. But basically, we build the whole building, tear the roof off, provide higher parapet walls, we can hide all the rooftop HVAC units, and totally reface the entire building. We have the predominant material, as you see, is going to be this brick, and then...
It's not as gray as we see on the rendering there, it's more of a reddish.
Yeah, and then on the base, along these areas, there'll be a burnished, stone-like material, and then the upper facade will be a mineral fiber wood look siding, and then the frames and the canopy will be treated nice gluteum. So we have totally maintenance-free, 100 percent new look to the building. As Jeff said, we're building on the existing, the existing configuration, and we're improving the entire site, doing the DDA walls, totally re-landscaping the site, it'll look like a totally new building. We're going to repay the parking lot, it'll be 100 percent new.
All right, thank you for that information. Does basically anybody on the commission have anything they want to ask, or any comments? Go ahead.
So Jeff, you're saying you're moving the Pizza Hut down the street?
The Pizza Hut's going to be basically a carryout delivery location down the street where 7-Eleven was on the corner of Sheldon and Ford.
Okay, and then this will be the restaurant?
Yeah, so these will be two carryout, yeah, two separate carryout-type restaurants.
Won't it be a Pizza Hut sit-down?
As we know it.
Not as we know it, that's correct. Nobody sits down to eat pizza anymore.
So what is, what's going to go in here?
I don't know yet. I don't, I don't know.
Speculative.
There will be two businesses?
Two businesses, yeah.
It's a spec, commercial building, so...
Greg said he's going to miss that red roof.
But they are adding some parking, you know, they are adding some parking lot landscaping, they're adding landscaping all along the east side of the property, they're adjacent to the existing condo, condos there, they're adding landscaping along the frontage and the DDA walls, they're adding a island right at the entrance to the parking lot where there is one right now where their flagpole is, that'll help with some traffic control to this first bay of parking in front of the building, so it'll make the site function a little bit better, and there's plenty of parking for that type of use on the site.
Jeff, should we be approving an actual flow of the site since there's going to be two businesses? Because I don't really see how that, how this references two businesses, as opposed to one.
There's a door in the front and a door on the side, so, or two doors on the side.
Basically, there's a, it'll be split, I don't know about that in the middle, but it'll be split north to south, one door will be, excuse, one door will be here, on the Ford Road, one will be here, as you can see, the door here, so it'll be two distinct storefronts.
Gotcha, okay. All right, you answered my question about, that I had, about the height of the parapets and hiding mechanicals, that's always very important. Anybody else have any, anything?
All set?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the site plan for the proposed exterior building and site renovations to the soon-to-be former Pizza Hut building, including the landscaping modification for foundation planting on parcel 058-99-0003-006 as presented.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, so good luck to you. Mike? All right, we have some referrals to make to staff, the all-rig development, which we talked about tonight, the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities, Ridge Creek Fire Station Number Two expansion in Parkside of Canton, do I hear a motion to send that to staff?
Support.
Motion to send that to staff by Commissioner Graham Hudek and support by Commissioner Zuber, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? We have a public hearing for January 7th with two projects, the Crup, it's at Casselou Family Trust Rezoning, and the Tara's Toddler Time. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing for January 7th?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner, is it Bennett? Yes. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we have the 2019 Planning Commission meeting dates. We just need to, I mean, they're already established, so we just need to...
You need to approve them, they go to the board for approval, and then they get advertised. Essentially, this week, this year, for a change, almost all of the meetings are on the first Monday, believe it or not.
Wow.
Except for, even July is, so the only one that's not on the first Monday is the September meeting due to Labor Day.
Excellent. I move to approve the planning commissioner's schedule, planning commission's schedule for 2019.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve, to approve this schedule that's listed for 2019 by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, anything else to talk about, Jeff?
I think that's it, we've got some kind of big projects coming in first quarter of next year, so we should, we will not have a December meeting, the one rezoning was rescheduled from December to January due to some advertising issues.
How's Julie going to afford her Christmas gifts?
Well, the...
How are we going to get Christmas cookies?
The discussion...
Well, we'll just schedule something, I guess.
Wait.
Okay, yes.
So I think we can adjourn, so...
Okay, do I hear a motion to...
Social plans afterwards.
Adjourn, and then we do have...
I'm motion for adjourn.
Support.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned, so then...